Twenty twenty-five, it's now six thirty. Going to call it to order. Uh, we do have a quorum. Um, can I get you Roger to do the invocation for us, please?
Let us pray. Dear Father, Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity. We can come together, Lord, as, uh, community members and friends. And we just, uh, pray, Lord, for your discernment as we deal with, uh, issues of our community and, uh, as we try to protect the integrity and the quality of the way we live and how we live. We also, Lord, just lift up our first responders and we just ask for safety as they take care of our community and we just lift up our military all over the world and we pray for safety for them and their families. We make this prayer in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Roger. Uh, our last meeting was on June the sixteenth, uh, last month. Can I get an approval of the minutes for that meeting?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second? Second, Roger. Uh, any more discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, minutes passed. Um, John, addition, deletions, anything?
Yes, sir.
About reports?
Yes, the, uh, pronounced correct, this, um, Charlotte, the, um, place worship. Oh, right. That would be true.
Okay. Yeah. All right, uh, I don't think there's any old business, although the new business may be old business. Um, we'll have a discussion and recommendation on ZC twenty-four dash nine five by Will Simmons the third for conditional rezoning to allow improvements to the former Hickory Grove Baptist Church baseball complex to allow for tournaments for property located at fifty-seven fifteen Will Grove Min Hill Road, tax parcel number one-three-seven dash zero-four-one dash four-seven. All right, how you want to do this, John?
If it's okay, I'm going to ask the applicant to come in and she'll go through the site plan and discuss some of the changes that have occurred since you heard this case last.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Abby Steagall and I represent Eagle Engineering located at twenty thirteen Van Buren Avenue in Indian Trail, North Carolina. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'd like to begin tonight's presentations by showing you the current status of the field layout. John, do you mind going to the next slide?
Is that not working?
Uh-uh. Thank you. On the exhibit in front of you, the existing conditions are shown. In red, you can see the areas we've highlighted to indicate the proposed changes. Specifically, we're proposing to remove fields four and five. Field three would be expanded and field five would be repurposed for additional parking in a proposed building. In terms of traffic improvements, we're proposing the addition of a right turn lane and an extension of the left turn stacking lane to improve access and circulation. Currently, the site has one entrance lane and two exit lanes. We're proposing to reverse this, to have two entrance lanes and one exit lane with the goal of moving vehicles off the main road and into the site more efficiently. The property owner will be responsible for maintaining all landscape buffers and fencing in good condition. Uh, John, if you, okay, you are. Um, let's see here. The fence along the southern border will be extended and repaired as part of these improvements. The proposed building will include six bays. The first four bays will be dedicated to SBA. The remaining two bays will be exclusively for functions that directly relate to sports programs such as administrative space for facility operations, a health, wellness, and rehabilitation facility for players, coaches, and staff, a food and merchandise area for tournament participants, classrooms or study space for players and staff. Regarding tournament operations, we're limited to no more than thirty-five weekends per year. Additionally, no tournaments will be held on the following holidays: New Year's, Martin Luther King, Presidents, Veterans, Thanksgiving, or Christmas Day. All field lights will be turned off by nine PM every night and we, uh, and field six will not have any lights installed. To manage traffic and parking, we'll limit the tournaments to no more than one game per seventy-five parking stalls. For example, if two games are played simultaneously, a hundred and fifty parking stalls must be available. Additionally, we'll hire a patrol officer during tournament events to assist with traffic and safety. We are proposing approximately three hundred parking spots. Our park rules and tournament schedules will be posted on our website in advance for public awareness and transparency. This concludes the summary of our proposed changes. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Thank you for clicking through that.
Anything else? Kenny, anything?
No, sir.
All right, Roger?
Yeah, I got a couple things. Um, now, is, is there a set of proposed policies or standards about which the park will be run or anything like that that's, that's in place?
Yes, sir. We actually have, uh, park rules posted on the park. I am the, uh, field manager and, um, we have everything on our park website.
Okay. Now, I noticed the holiday schedule was, uh, that's not even when you're going to be using it. That's not during baseball season.
Yes.
What about Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Labor Day?
Yes, sir.
Easter?
Yes, sir. Um, I completely understand the concern around balancing community with tournament activity. Um, when we selected the holiday weekends, we focused on times when families are more likely to gather out-of-town guests or have family gatherings. Um, summer holidays already tend to come with increased noise and celebrations like fireworks, neighborhood events. So tournament play wouldn't significantly add noise or activity level. Um, that said, our goal is to be respectful neighbors while still supporting the strong youth program.
Okay. I hear what you're saying there. But now, tell me just, uh, just, just something that I need to understand. Where's the benefit to the community, to Min Hill, for this project?
I think there's several benefits. Um, the encouragement of a youth program in Min Hill brings so much to this environment and to this community that will help the growth of our youth and sports academics. You know, you see a lot of people moving to Min Hill and this is another amenity of Min Hill, hey, we have a local sports park program. Um...
Well, we have that in Min Hill Athletic Association, so had that for quite a while.
It would be nice to have another one.
It would, it would, but, uh, but, but I, you know, at the things that I'm looking at and, and what you said in your proposal, your proposal's good, but my, my concern is this. My son was a baseball player, played on those field. I was a coach, coached on those fields. Okay? But it was, it was a different purpose at that time. You know, being a church ball, it was, uh, never used on Wednesdays, never used on Sundays and, um, you know, and not even all the way through the summer. And, you know, and that's the way it was for a long time and then, of course, not used. Uh, you know, I have real concerns about putting a profit business
Mm-hmm.
right in the middle of a community.
Yes, sir.
Right in the middle of residential because I don't see, I'm struggling with how that, how that plays together. Um, um, because, you know, we're, we, we have to take it in accordance for everybody that's here.
Yes, sir.
Do you see most of the, most of the youth that are using this facility, you see those as local people or as, uh, travel ball people?
Majority of them are local people. Um, and I know that you said your overall goal and how you see this benefiting is, you know, these kids, they're excited to play ball, just like the kids at Hickory Grove were.
Their parents are excited too.
Yes, their parents are.
You ever been to one?
Yes, yes. It's awesome and it's a great experience.
It can be.
Yes.
Has some downsides to it, too.
Yes, sir.
You have been to one, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, all right.
Yes, yes. Um, so I think the main purpose of the ballpark is to establish a good environment for these kids to continue to do what they love, which is playing ball. And that's our main goal here, too, is to encourage, um, a strong youth sports program in the Min Hill community. This is something we want to bring to Min Hill, a strong youth sports program.
Now, you say you're the manager.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to be on site during tournaments?
Yes, sir, I can be.
That you are or you may be?
I am happy to be. If that is something that you guys are requesting of me, I can be. Um, I have twenty-four-seven access to the site. I have a app on my phone that shows me cameras and reports directly to me. We have a, a website as well.
It, um, um, and on the parking, I have one other question on the parking at this time. From the previous proposal, I'm confused. What is the actual count? Are we up or down on the parking from the previous proposal?
We are up.
Up by?
We're proposing approximately three hundred parking spaces.
And the previous?
Um, I believe the previous was about, uh...
I think we're about six parking spots.
We're up about sixty parking spots, so we've added about sixty. Yep. We're removing another field to accommodate parking.
Okay. Uh, uh, that's all my questions this time. Matthew Sherman, thank you.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I saw where you said you were going to repair the fence on the southern property. And just in general, what's the fence height around the perimeter of the property?
I believe it's seven feet.
I think the town of Min Hill's six-foot max. It's going to be replaced, not, not repaired.
Replaced, okay. And so it's...
Or maintained and repaired.
Could you come up to the, to the mic so we get this on record? Name and address.
Hello, I'm Matthew Kersher with, with Eagle Engineering, um, twenty thirteen Van Buren Avenue in Indian Trail, North Carolina. Uh, the, the fence that's on that, that side right now is existing now, but it's beat up and down. As part of this agreement, we're replacing that fence with another fence. And I think the town of Min Hill's ordinance is six foot is as high as that we can go back with.
And is it solid? Is it chain link and windscreen?
No, 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 it's, it's a wooden fence. It'll be a solid, solid wooden fence, yes, sir.
Uh, I think that's all I have right now.
All right, George, anything?
Kind of want to tag on to something that Roger was asking about. Um, can you tell us a little bit more about, like, how does this operate? What's, what's a schedule like?
Um, so Monday through Friday is your normal practices. There might be two teams per field, one that starts at five-thirty, one that starts at seven. Um, we do have a, a middle school and high school that are using it from like third, three-thirty to five-thirty schedule, but they're only out there, I think, like maybe two days a week, Hickory Grove being one of them, um, another charter school.
Bradford Prep.
Bradford Prep being, uh, another one. And then on the weekends, um, Saturdays will be a little bit longer days. They usually start around nine and they'll go until probably six PM. Uh, Sundays a little bit later, uh, they'll usually start about ten and they'll usually wrap up about four PM.
So your hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, twelve to seven?
Um, Monday through Friday is probably going to be closer to like three-thirty to, to nine PM, but we do have maintenance crews that are there in the morning that start and maintain the fields. Um, so the active use that you'll see, like, a lot of cars and stuff out there will be from three-thirty to, to nine PM.
Okay. So as far as like tournaments, those are Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Usually just Saturday and Sunday.
Okay. What happens if there's a rain day?
If there's a rain day, then it'll be a one-day tournament.
Okay.
Um, one-day tournament or if they don't have enough participants to come back for that one day, just won't have a tournament that weekend at all.
Okay. Let me ask about the landscaping buffer detail. What's the intent of that?
Um, it was brought to our attention from staff and I think my sheriff council made the comment or who did that some of the buffers, that existing buffers there don't meet the current standards. So this will be a minimum that we have on there. So we can work with the existing trees out there, but there are some spots that might need some more vegetation on there, so we're going to make sure we add that back into it as we're upgrading the park.
So it's not to be intended as a sound barrier or any kind of engineering behind it to be...
No, sir.
... dissipate any type of sound?
No, sir. I think towards the front of the site, there was only like single trees up there. Um, so it's a lot more minimal than this is right...
Sure.
... showing, so we're going to add more landscaping to kind of get that buffer at least, um, on the hill that's there. There's already kind of a berm up there.
Yeah.
It's more just single trees, so we'll add a lot of the bushes and like that into it. On the other two sides, it's solid woods, um, on two of the sides. Um, so we'll work with the, the, the town on exactly what they want planted on that side because obviously, you know, there's a big tree buffer on a quarter of it and the rest of it is all existing trees too. So we'll plant probably inside of that existing tree so that we don't, we don't want to remove any of the, the nice aged trees that are on outside.
But nothing that's going to be like graded to elevation? Like, you're not going to build a berm and try to create any type of like...
There's already a berm along that, that far side, so we'll leave that one. And then there's already existing hedge on one piece of that wraps around the fence, so we're just going to add to those pieces.
Okay.
Uh, anything that's fully grown now, that's been there since the park's been there and it's grown up, I mean, this, the, the hedge, I think, is taller than me and it's fully grown out on that side, so we wouldn't want to take that out to put something that will take years to grow back up on that side. And we are adding a set of solid fence we have in the red where a lot of the homeowners are, are on that side.
Okay. Yeah, I just, just want to ask, just seeing if that helps with any of the noise, you know, I've seen that on other projects where a sound barrier can be installed with vegetation, so just reasoning for my question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's all I have right now.
All right, George, Rhonda?
Um, so what are the benefits of your field versus the fields at Brief Road? How are you marketing and who are you marketing to?
So this is, uh, a, a youth park that allows you to come and play at a higher level. So like where Min Hill, you have to be part of that association. That's pretty much a private organization just for Min Hill Rec. If I was, um, like, any, like, where you guys rent your soccer fields out to, that's not like Min Hill Rec. Those are teams that are coming to rent that facility that are playing at a higher level. They could go play at the Min Hill, but again, they, they rent the soccer fields from the town because they're usually travel teams that are, are semi-local. When we say local, Charlotte and surrounding, uh, is where most of these teams from, not... I, I personally have teams that are players on my team that live in Min Hill that we do practice and will play at Min Hill as well. Um, but it's that higher level competition-wise is what you'll end up having at this field versus at a rec is, is, you know, still bonding and things like that. There's multiple, I have half my kids that play rec and half my kids, like me personally, I have three boys. Um, I have some that play rec, some that play travel. It just depends on the individual and what they're looking to, to accomplish.
Would your fields be more expensive to rent or lease than the Mecklenburg County fields?
The Mecklenburg County fields, which ones?
Or the Brief Road?
I don't, I don't think they rent fields at Brief Road.
They don't have any, okay.
Uh, the, the Min Hill Association, I don't think rents any of their fields.
Okay.
That's for them only. They don't allow any outside people on them. So I would say yes, because they don't allow you to rent those fields at all.
Okay. Um, would you be willing to have a police officer there whenever you're having events? Um, not just for parking. I know you said you would have In-N-Out for...
No, we have them at the main entrance, so they'll be directing traffic.
For traffic?
Yes.
Will they stay there?
They'll be there for the entirety of it.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Um, that's all I have.
All right, uh, just a couple questions. Um, under the conditions that you all, I think, have agreed to, you basically say a facility owner representative, and I'm assuming that's Abby you're talking about.
It would be...
Will be there all the time.
Any of the owners. I know Abby said she's going to be there, but any...
But somebody.
Somebody that's...
Will be there, knows the rules, knows everything, right?
That also knows the rules of the park as well as, as the nor, origins and stuff for the town, so that if there's any issues, they'll, they'll go there, as well as a terminate director as well. So if we rent it out to like, um, Perfect Game, there'll be a Perfect Game director as well as a, a owner representative there as well.
All right.
As well as a cop up front in case it...
Yes.
... gets crazy.
Yes. Um, so, uh, what, what is the normal baseball season? Is it kind of March through October?
Um, there's two seasons, uh, you know, really there's three. So there, you'll, you'll, it's whatever it is, you'll start spring, um, starting when it warms up, so maybe February, not really February, you might start practicing in February. And so you go from spring and then you'll actually go to summer, which is more the older kids, like fourteen-ish high school kids, um, a lot of the younger ones will cup out. There might be like some one-off tournaments that we have in there, like some, um, like season champion-type tournaments, and then you go right into, to fall season. Um, so spring is your biggest season. You'll have your most act, active piece in there. Summer is more, a little bit older kids in there, so like your eight U and stuff will probably not play as many summer tournaments. Um, the reason it is, is that high school kids play at their school and during the spring season, once that spring high school season's up, they go to summer, which again is more competitive, they'll, they'll rotate around, you won't be able to play with your school, so they play with other kids. Um, and so fall season's a little bit less because like you've got football right now and other activities that kids will go in and play. Um, so you'll, you'll probably say, if spring's a hundred percent, summer will probably be like fifty percent, fall's probably like seventy-five percent active as it goes through it. And then from November on, from November to January, you, you won't see much active out there, might as well just doing maintenance and repairs, uh, more in the practice schedule.
So basically, eight months a year, I mean, November, December, January, and February, there's not much going on, right?
Not unless it's a good day. I mean, people will be working out in, indoor facilities. Um, obviously, if you've got a pretty day, you might have some kids out there practicing, but it'll be very minimal onsite.
The, the point I'm getting to you, Matthew, is, is the fact that in thirty-five weekends, you've got every weekend in those eight months that you're going, you've got the possibility of having a tournament every weekend in those eight months.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so that's, that's some disruption to everybody, the people traveling the road, the people living in the neighborhoods. I mean, so that's some disruption every weekend. And then you've got some holidays that you took out, but they're not really things that are important to you. The ones that are important are Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and Labor Day. Those are the ones that, the family time during the summer when people want to have picnics and stuff. So those, in my opinion, are the holidays that need to come out, not the ones, I mean, we'll trade you Veterans Day for those.
And the, and the bigger ones...
And Thanksgiving and everything else.
On those ones are, which ones, like, again, Thanksgiving is, is a quieter time. You're, you're eating around the table, you're, you're in outside, torches light, you've got fireworks going off all night. Memorial Day, fireworks going off all night. So if we're trying to say what possibly bad things that we have in the community, where everybody usually brings up noise. So the holidays you're, you're saying are the noisiest holidays out there. I don't think there's a, as much of an advantage of us not being there on Fourth of July where it's already going to be a noisy weekend versus Thanksgiving or Christmas where it's a, a quieter weekend and now we're not interrupting anybody's dinners.
Yeah, I, I, I would say the summer, all right? Fourth of July, y'all are going to shut down. The other night y'all said nine o'clock. Is it nine o'clock or ten o'clock when the lights go off?
It's, it's nine PM.
Nine PM, so fireworks don't go off before nine PM anyway, so, you know, that, that's kind of a discount. I, I just think these holidays are not the right holidays if you're going to try to preserve some peace around that ball field. Um, the thirty-five is, I think, way too many. Every weekend for eight months, that just seems to me a lot. I mean, to me, if you did every other weekend or something like that, so there's at least some rest, it would make a lot more sense.
To be completely honest, if we do every other weekend, the, the park would go bankrupt the first year.
That's the other piece, all right? So what is, this is a business. This is not a public facility. This is a business. And so I'm having a hard time with this from that standpoint, the fact that it's, it's not a publicly used facility, it's not part of the town. I'm not sure what we gain from this other than a lot of headaches. And that, that's the part that's kind of got me baffled right now is what do we get out of it? What does a town, we're here to look out for the town. We're not here to look out for your business. We're here to look out for the town. Now, if this business was good for the town, yeah, may, maybe it makes sense. So, so try to convince us why we should be doing this.
So obviously, the biggest thing for the rest of the local businesses in your town, this will provide more sales for them. People will be going to games and going to eat afterwards. Same thing for lunches and everything else, your local shops and everything, if they're in the area. Again, you're, you're bringing tons more customers to your town that will then go to your retail shops and, and stores, as well as provide hundreds of kids a safe spot to be able to play, not just limited to, hey, I, I couldn't go out and see the Min Hill rec place. Right now, if I want to bring my kid out there, they always say that, hey, you, you have to be part of the association. They saying that that is not-for-profit.
But there are public parks you can go to and play. We have baseball diamonds at the parks.
Those baseball diamonds are, are rented out probably every day of the week for, for travel teams. So you guys are actually renting out to travel teams, like the park right before you get to ours? The town rents out to travel teams. The same things that we're doing, you guys are doing as a town.
Right, and we benefit from that, right?
Well, the taxpayers are paying for that park that you guys rent out for.
Yeah, but we're renting it out for some kind of money, I would guess, right?
It's probably thirty-five dollars, probably not enough to cover the maintenance and, and lights on it. Realistically, the taxpayers provide the park, says you have it, you'll, you'll rent it out because, again, that's the park. If you don't have an association that's using the park, your next best thing is to rent it out to a travel team. Here, no taxpayer dollars. We're only bringing into the town at the same time as providing that safe spot for youth to be able to do at a competitive level and go out and play.
I wish we had the infrastructure to, that I felt comfortable would support this. I wish we had the roads and, and that's, that's not your issue, it's our issue. I mean, it's the North Carolina DOT issue, I guess, but I, I just, I worry about that road every weekend being clogged up with cars because it's not just a certain time of the day, it's all day long.
Kind of.
You've got games, what, what's your game, last an hour, hour and a half, two hours? So there's constantly...
I'd say an hour and a half. So it's constant people coming in, but it's not like you're going to have everybody there at once. They're going to come in staggers, um, and it's going to be one game per field, you're going to play one game per field at a time.
The coach says be there a half an hour before the game. When's everybody going to get there?
Hopefully, the coach is saying be there an hour before the game.
Well, whatever he says.
And that's why we did seventy-five spots per field versus like twenty-two, which would be both teams. You have eleven kids per team, um, so instead of doing twenty-two cars, we did seventy-five cars per field just as that backup to cover.
What's the age group that's here, Matthew? What are the age groups? Are there any sixteen-year-old leagues here?
Oh, yeah, so we'll go all the way to, to high school. So you'll have from seven U up to eighteen U, which is high school level.
So that'd be more parking because they're not going to ride with their parents.
Well, the parents probably wouldn't come to a lot of those games on that aspect of it.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, I don't know how to address that, you know? I still have some concerns about the holidays. The ones that you gave up here don't really, uh, don't affect anything. I mean, it, it looks nice on paper, but I'm not sure it affects anything. Um, the number of days, I think, I think that's too many days. I just think that something every weekend is just too much. Um, so, you know, I'm not sure where I'm going with this. I mean, I, I... I mean, this is, this, you aren't willing to waver on any of this stuff, right? I mean, this is kind of what you've worked out with, I guess, the commissioners, these numbers that are on this piece of paper?
That is what was worked out and provided to us to, to include as part of this rezoning, That is what was worked out and provided to us to include as part of this rezoning, yes.
Right.
And not saying that you can't, not a part of your recommendation, I think you guys can add.
Oh, yeah.
Details to it that says, I recommended with the addition of these holidays on it, and we can go down that path.
All right, so let's open it up to the table here, and let's just talk a little bit about this whole thing, about, I mean, let's start with the days. Is that too many days to allow for the disruption in that ballpark? 35 days, and it's gonna be over an eight-month period of time.
35 weekends.
35 weekends over an eight-month period of time, basically, is every weekend, there'll be, there's a possibility of a tournament, and as a business, they would definitely promote it to try to get every weekend. Is that too much?
I think it is.
Anybody else?
I would agree.
Rhonda, thoughts?
It's hard for me to say right now.
Scott?
I just wonder if you're gonna get 35 dates.
35 weekends?
I don't know.
It's assuming perfect weather every weekend.
And you're assuming that you're gonna fill that place up every weekend?
It'll go.
I've been out of the travel game for about six years.
It's big right now.
It's big.
But.
They wouldn't be doing it if it wasn't big.
Well, and I think it's big for the smaller kids. I mean, when you start getting to showcase baseball, the parents are gonna be limited. There's not gonna be anybody there watching them, even though they'll tell them there's, even though they'll tell them there's college scouts there, there won't be. So I don't think there's that much at the higher age level as much as there is when you're at the 8U, 10, you know, 12. Those are the ones that are gonna bring the volume of people to the field.
Do you agree?
I would say you get more parents from an 8U game than a high school game any day.
Yeah.
I can, you can, you can look at the memes where people show you with all the tents, 8U parent versus high school parent, where you're there just for the game. You sit in the bleachers, you don't bring your chair anymore, you're there just for the game and gone. The younger ages is definitely where you're gonna see more of the impact.
So what do you, where, do you think Scott's right about you're not gonna fill up all those weekends?
I don't know if we're not gonna fill up all the weekends, I'm not sure we're gonna fill up the complete time on them.
The what?
The full time, so we might not have four fields going all day long. You might just have one field going for a couple of games on that aspect of it. So I think we can probably fill 35 weeks with, depending on the weather. Right now, it's raining every week, and again, if it rains every weekend, then maybe, maybe not. Could I get at least one team on every field every weekend? Maybe, I don't know if I'm gonna fill the whole place out. We might just use the first three fields and not even use field six most of the time. It's more of a softball field if they wanna do this girl softball league that wants to be able to play on it. Because there's no light, so that one will be, especially as you get closer to dark, by five o'clock, it's probably gonna be getting too unsafe.
So where's the number 35 come from? Was that your number, or was that the town's number?
I think it was a mutual number which was left. Did we start that or were we finished? I'll be honest, we've been doing this for almost a year now, so it's hard to know where that number's come from.
I think that's the number we started with.
Okay.
I think that's the initial number.
And again, it's hard to say if we posted on our website and say we're having a tournament, then it gets rained out, is that gonna count against us or for us on our week count? Let's say you do 30 weeks versus 35.
Well, if it doesn't get rained out, are y'all gonna reschedule during the week?
No, the people work and school, it's only, it's gonna be weekends. And again, you're thinking probably 20% of them are probably gonna get rained out through that season year. And I can go to Lake Perfect Game and see exactly how many they have on average per year, but I can tell you on my 11-game season, I'm usually seeing about 20% of our games getting rained out.
Yeah, I have a read, Rick, just a quick question. You said one thing, didn't see how it could be profitable viable business without 35 weeks.
Well, he was saying every other week. So every other week in 35 weeks is, now you're going from 20 to 35, that's the big difference.
That's, that part's not my question. My question is, is this is a for-profit business? So with that stated, y'all are gonna do whatever it takes to make it profitable, right?
We're, I would question the for-profit as we're not gonna lose money in the park. There's not a, I don't think there's gonna be a ton of money to gain on this one. Again, I think every person that's a part of this park has a kid that plays baseball that's gonna benefit just from a nice, safe place to be at.
Just curious, how many owners are there?
There's four, and every one of them has kids that play baseball. Three of them are also owners of SBA that play baseball for that.
Well, what do you think about the noise pollution side of it? How think, how bad do you think it's gonna get for the neighborhoods around there?
I think this baseball field's been here longer than maybe I've been alive, and if you built a house or moved in next to an existing baseball field.
Well, now, wait a minute, that's true, but now, it wasn't this type of ball. It was ball that wasn't used on Sundays. Are you saying you're willing to not use Sundays?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna, you're saying noise pollution as a general, not just any day of the week.
No, and noise pollution is bringing in tournament ball up to 35 weekends a year.
Yep.
That's the noise pollution I'm talking about. I got five grandsons, okay? Like I said, I was a coach up at that field, I think it was a church league. But this is, what you're talking about is a totally different thing. You're not talking about the standard rec league. You said yourself, this is for high-end athlete or a higher skilled athlete.
Yep.
Okay, and I know you said you had to pay a fee to be in Midhill Athletic, but do you not have to pay a fee to use your fields?
Yeah, the place itself, you rent out to it.
Yeah.
Let's say we rent $55.
Yeah, but I'm just saying you have to pay a fee to be involved in both. It's not like yours is free.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, I think y'all have a good idea, I really do. I just think this is the wrong spot, I really do. I think you're changing something that's a dynamic that has been set for a long time, and if you're going back in there and doing rec ball and that type of thing, it'd be one thing, but you're needing the exceptions to go do what you want to do, it's the only reason you're before us, okay? And like I said, I think it's a good idea, but I along with the chairman, I don't see where it benefits Midhill. And I think it's a good idea, but I just think it's in the wrong place. Anyplace else that we do fields or we do anything else is connected to a larger park, an open area, without houses real close or, you know, you know, real nearby. And I just, I just struggle with that, because like I said, also too, I remember wind screens. What did Eagle Engineering decide on wind screens?
All the fields will have wind screens on them.
And they were talking about replacing them at one time, or upgrading them at one time.
Yeah, so the whole park's gonna end up being upgraded. We upgraded a lot of the buildings already, but like the fences and the turf fields will go in, and on the fences will have wind screens, and that's more obviously for people sitting in, that, you know, gives you a little more privacy, but it helps the on-field play. If you have, you need a background to be able to see balls easier, so that wind screen being a blue color or something like that will help you track the ball better.
And the lighting that was gonna be upgraded, but it was gonna be a softer light?
Yeah, they're LEDs, these are the old lights that have been adjusted probably since the park's been there, so that they might shade over across of it, but our plan is to upgrade them to all LED lights.
And tell me about this building, and what you're gonna do there.
So, and again, it's an associated building to the park. It's for mostly SBA kids are gonna go in there and work out. So if it's raining outdoors, this is the driest place they have during winter months, they'll come in and here and work. A lot of the teams will have like one outdoor day and then one indoor day. It's batting cages, a workout area, a place for the study. So if like, they're a high school team and their practice is later, they'll come here right after school, so they get off at 3:30, they'll come do the study, and then they'll go out and practice when their coaches get there.
Come do their studying?
Yeah, like schoolwork.
All right. Let me see if I can, yeah, and I'll commend you for what you, I went by the, the place looks a lot better already. I mean, y'all have done some work out there, apparently, it looks like you cleaned it up some. What if, what if we stuck with the, you know, I'll give you an extra weekend, 36 weekends, but you can only have three a month, and you gotta give up Memorial Day, Labor Day, and the Fourth of July. You can have some of these other ones back, because they don't mean anything, I don't think.
I think we would consider any of the recommendations that you.
You do what?
I think we would consider any of the recommendations that you make tonight.
What about that? No more than three a month. They gotta give up the holidays of Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and Labor Day, which are key holidays in the summertime when people have picnics and stuff. I think that was the main things that were bothering me. Thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'm at risk of you scolding me again about.
I don't scold you.
Because last, last meeting we had, the church was, had a 200-car parking lot, and I asked about a TIA, and it's like, what are you trying to say? You don't want them to grow and have church? And I guess from this perspective, we've got a 300-car parking lot. Y'all want to excel and make it a blowout where you, people are booked for two years. I mean, the more people you can get in here, the better off you are. And once we approve it, then we're approving based on that. And I guess my question to John is, at what point would a TIA be required?
If it helps out, we've already reached out to DOT, and there's no recommended improvements for the site. But as working with the town, they requested the right turn lane as well as extending the left turn lane. So we are doing off-site improvements, even though DOT and the TIA would not have recommended it.
But that's not your question, a TIA would be.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, I don't have to tell you, we go through this all the time, you get a 120-lot subdivision, oh my gosh, you're gonna have a TIA, you gotta do this improvement at this intersection, and I'm like, really, for 100? But this is 300-car parking lot that's gonna be in and out all day long. And I'm just thinking, is the surrounding, to Mr. Chairman's point earlier about the infrastructure, do we have adjacent intersections? Because I know the last time I did a, a little medical office building out here, we had to do improvements five miles away for intersections because of the scoping of it. And I was like, has anybody looked at the scoping to see how many surrounding intersections this is gonna affect?
The biggest difference from what you're talking about there versus here is that you're probably, nothing was built on that property. Here, we have six fields that we're reducing the amount of fields that we have on it. So everything that's per the DOT codebook, we're actually reducing the amount of traffic that's on the roads that what the park currently have now.
By adding more parking?
Well, we're adding more parking again as a request from the town as a caution. We might not ever use all those parking spots. That's why the one next to the, like, lower field five was, it's an auxiliary parking lot. We'll fill out all the rest of the parking, and if that fills up, then we'll spill over to fill five. So we keep everything more towards the middle of the site. But again, as a precaution, we wanted to make sure that we could provide that parking if needed.
Yeah. But in the end, it's gonna be a whole lot more traffic than what is currently there. If you're successful, if there's not more traffic than what there is now, you're gonna go bankrupt.
We are currently using the fields Monday through Friday at full capacity on it. This will be the weekend time would be the difference. And again, weekend time, you usually have people not as working as much, so the people on the roads should be less in different times than normal. Your big travel times are going to work and then coming back from work. So your increased traffic that you might see is on the weekends, and it's gonna be at different times. It's gonna be out throughout the day, it's not gonna be everybody coming in at eight, everybody leaving at six, it's gonna be a little bit of traffic all day long.
Yeah, I mean, as many, as long as I've lived here and driven that road, rarely do I see any traffic go in and out of that place. So that's why I'm saying, what you're proposing is gonna magnify that tremendously, so.
So, John and I talked about this today, and I guess there's no way to do it. Let them do a tournament. Let them do a tournament so we could see what the heck goes on. We got so many, they've got so many unknowns, and we've got so many unknowns, we really don't. You know, if we put a bunch of restrictions on here like we really want to do, they don't have a business anymore. Maybe that's just the way it is, but I guess there's no way legally to do that, right?
Well, I mean, what you, and we did discuss it.
Yeah.
And that has brought up that very idea that you're talking about, which is kind of like just run a trial.
Yeah.
So basically allow them to have tournaments, and then maybe have them have a few, and then go back and reassess and say, all right, what problems did we see? Is there something that is.
I'd like to make a motion.
So we have talked about that.
I'd like to make a motion.
Maybe what you could do, Mr. Gatz, is you could toss that in your motion just as a recommendation for the board to think.
Consider.
And we can make, because when I said we spoke about it, it was, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe 10 seconds, I mean, it was, you know, just it was thrown in the air and it was batted down. So maybe you put it in your motion and maybe the board thinks that, and then we talk with Ken, our attorney, we can see if we can get it through.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
George. Is this the first type of model that SBA has ever done? Is there a reference? I guess, is there another reference complex that someone can Google or, you know, do an online search of reviews on?
There are tons of parks.
But for SBA specifically?
SBA is just the building itself, that's all, they're renting space out. They have a facility right now in Matthews, so we'll relocate their facility in Matthews to here.
Okay.
So they do currently lease a facility in Matthews, and instead, they're gonna lease this building here at the park, but not the fields at all. There's no organization I know of that has their own fields, they always rent their fields.
There's nothing that you can think of where it's a complex surrounded by residential?
Yeah.
Again, I don't have kids that, you know, play ball or anything.
There are, I can give you hundreds probably of fields that are surrounded. Again, most parks are around residential, the residentials where kids play and go into it. If there wasn't any residential around, unless you do a complex, like indoor complexes, you have like basketball or volleyball, because then you can have shops and indoor. Every outdoor place usually is by residential surrounding it.
Carolina courts.
Yeah, Carolina courts is a mix between them, but I'm not sure, other than the one right next to the bypass that you guys have here, and again, residential's right across the street from it, so you just, you still have residential all around that park too. I don't, I don't know of any facility ever that I've seen that doesn't have residential all the way around it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to make a motion, and due to the fact that for me, and I believe others on this board, there are still quite a bit of unknown information that we still don't know how it would affect, how it would play. I would make a motion to present an unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on ZZ 24-9 appears to be inconsistent with the adopted land use plan, which designates subject property as open space recreation activity at this time.
All right, can I get a second?
I second it.
George seconds it. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
How many we got? Three? All those opposed?
I'm on the fence because I really like the way that they narrowed down everything. They went from six fields to three, and they're really trying to accommodate the neighborhood. And he is correct that most fields do have homes around the neighborhood, and even the ones on Brief Road right next to a neighborhood. I like the plan, I like it, I just, like you said, the road is the problem.
Right.
So.
Yes, no, I'm staying.
I liked what you said about them trying it for.
That's not what the motion is.
I know, but I, that, just.
I know.
Putting that out there, I like the idea of what you said, let them try it, and we can come back and say whether or not it's good for us in Midhill.
And your vote is?
Repeat the question?
All right.
Make a motion of an unfavorable recommendation this time presented to the Commissioners on ZZ 24-9 appears to be at this time inconsistent with the adopted use plan, which designate subject property as open space recreation activity. To me, that would be Commissioners' idea.
So do you, you agree with his motion, or do you oppose his motion?
I oppose it.
You oppose, so we got three for and two against, right? If I vote, it's just gonna be a split. I would be opposed to it, I think, just because of the unknowns. That'd be four, yeah, so it'd be a four against it.
No, four in favor of the motion.
Four in favor of the motion, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes. All right, so the motion passes with an unfavorable motion.
Recommendation.
Yeah, it's just a recommendation, yep. All right, anything else, John? All right, so we pass that ball back to the Commissioners. Let's see what they do with it. No further things to talk about, any, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Let's move, let's go. It is carried.